Okay, guys, are y'all ready? I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, August 2nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance. And Mr. Gary Edwards?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you this evening. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this fine city of Aransas Pass. We pray that with input from all those involved in this process, that the council and all those involved that make decisions that serve the citizens well. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to serve you in this fine form of government. We ask these things in your name and in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations, and we're going to go to the quarterly update, collection of municipal court fees and fines with Stevens Ossito from Langberg Law Firm.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, city staff. Thank you for having me here again tonight. As you just said, this is the time for our quarterly reports on our performance on collecting your delinquent court municipal court fees and fines. And I believe you all are in possession of a handout we just gave that shows our recent collection efforts. Over the last three months, we've mailed 496 letters. We have utilized our computer resources to skip trace individuals whose addresses and names weren't, were no longer accurate, and we were able to track down 341. We've had 501, we had 501 outgoing calls to people who are delinquent to try to collect the amounts due to the city. And incoming, we fielded seven calls. During this recent period, your court has assigned to us 27,000, a little over $27,000 to collect. And over this last three months, we've collected over $62,000 on your behalf. So those are good numbers. I will say, the way it works, usually there's a lag between when it's referred to us and when we collect. The last time I was here, you had referred to us $115,000. And so that's probably why the 62 number is so high. So just to point out, this time, however, we're only referred 27,000, so I anticipate next quarter that the collections will probably be down a little bit. But it's just a function of how much is given to us to try to track down. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer. If not...
We appreciate it. Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you. Thank you again for having me here tonight.
Okay, now, we're going to go to an update by Eric Villarreal, LNV, Ardura, and David Bounce, dedicated control system regarding Skoda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Eric Villarreal with formerly LNV, now Ardura. I'll speak just kind of briefly on both projects. They're both well on their way. We've been having biweekly meetings with staff, our electrical engineer, construction inspection, construction inspectors and contractors. This project in particular, they are onsite, they're installing items. However, there are still two long lead time items that they're waiting on, doesn't mean that they're not working, but waiting on a computer and one other item. Yeah, and so, going to let them explain what's going on in construction, what they've done last week, what they're doing this week, and then what they have looking forward.
Just to give you a quick update since last month, we've got all our tower bases put in. We just finished the last tower base this past week. Tomorrow, we'll set that tower at the Public Works Building. And almost all the underground in is in. We will have all the underground in by the end of this week. So pretty much the onsite work is getting really close for, for us to be able to do the swapover once we get all the materials. We're also going to, this week, do some radio testing. We do have Radio Pass software that we do, Radio Pass studies before we start the project, but it's always good to go ahead and get that out of the way and make sure we have good communications everywhere to every site. So that's, that's ongoing, going to be ongoing this week. And our look ahead is hopefully have the panels delivered here by the end of the month. And then the long lead items are coming in at the end of this month. So we're looking, pushing forward, probably maybe depending on, it'll be the second week of September, and we'll start swapping everything over. That's kind of our projected, depending on delivery of items. So, but we have, we, since it hasn't been raining every day, we've had really good luck, and we've been, been knocking out a lot of stuff.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Now, we go to, back to Eric with the LNV, Ardura, and Matt Snowden.
Yeah, actually, this is...
Not...
In Yadi, yes, sir. Peter Cooper, yes.
In Yadi Services Regarding Wastewater Treatment Plant Electrical Project.
Yeah, and as I mentioned with, with the previous project, well on their way, the biweekly meetings that we're having with staff and construction inspection contractors include them. And so staff is getting, you know, detailed information every two weeks. And, you know, on a daily basis, when, when we need it, when questions come up. I know there have been some, some unexpected issues that have come up that we've, we've gotten with staff and have gotten resolved, you know, so things are, things are ongoing, and I'll let him explain more what's going on in construction.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've, we've actually put in half the MTC that runs your clarifier basins. We're about to start the cut over on the second phase of that, which we're supposed to begin on the fourth and the fifth. At that point, we expect about two weeks to remain for construction, and then we should be done, so...
Questions?
Thank you all.
Now, we're going to go to an update on Uclik Pump Station by John Gomez, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Okay, good update. All the equipment is out, the two pumps and the engine is all completely out, and also the electrical motor. They're all been disassembled. So far, we've gotten one set of quotes. I've got two companies going over to the machine shop to look at the equipment and give us another two quotes. The electric motor is back. There was actually very little thing wrong with it, so we had it serviced, and it's back at our shop. As far as the repairs, once we get the quotes, all three quotes in and decide on a vendor, then we would proceed, and it takes about two weeks, two to three weeks to fix both pumps, depending on, again, materials coming in. Both of the pumps were damaged pretty bad. They had bad shafts, so we're getting some new shafts made and stuff like that. But also depending on the material, how fast the work is going to be done. And also, again, we have more rain coming in, so rain is the problem also, as I said last time. That's what I got. Any questions?
What kind of timeframe do you think for the quotes to be in?
Well, I'm going to give them a week.
A week from today, or...
A week from today.
If they don't have them in, they're out, correct?
Right. I proceed. Actually, I'm going to start hounding those guys. There's only two quotes we've got to look at. One of them's already gone over there and looked. The other one hopefully will be there tomorrow or the next day. And maybe by the end of the week, maybe we'll have the other two quotes be able to decide on something. But we'll see. It depends on the contractor, how fast they move.
Fernando, is this not something we would put on SIFCAST, or...
No, because of the SIFCAST, it will take longer because of quotes, and because they're under the threshold, we can't get three days here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure we should have something by maybe Monday. Proceed. If not, if it comes in early, I'll let people know. Fernando will know because of Fernando and everything. Are we good? Any questions? No? Take that.
Get it fixed. Just get it fixed.
Yeah, before the rain comes.
Just get it fixed.
I'll try. We got rain tonight. You have a good evening. You too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council members' request. If discussion is decided, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting for July 6, 2021.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Now, we're going to go to the city manager, which is considering act on selecting exterior paint colors for the City Hall building.
This is, I don't, the painter is not here tonight, but you saw the samples outside. The question is, do you have a preference? And I see heads acknowledging that, so if you'd let us know, then we'll get him started.
Coral and white for me.
The coral, yeah, the coral and white for me. I could, we could probably prolong this and go out for more samples, but I know we can't do that, but, so of the samples that we have, we'll go with coral and white.
Of the one, out of curiosity, of the ones out there, is that one on the right or the left?
Left.
The one on the left.
Edge, the one on the side.
The other one is more pinky.
It's pink, pink, pink. Too pink.
So coral and white, Mayor, Jason?
He likes the colors that are on there. Boring.
So unless we hear opposition, then we're going to have him proceed with coral and white. Okay, very good. That's all we have on that.
I would still like to go with the darker trim, but I know Jeremy said that it would fade.
Two days. Fades in two days. Can't do it.
Okay, we'll need a motion on that.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to select the Jazz Age Coral and Bright White for the new paint colors for the City Hall buildings.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, we're going to go to consider an act on approving the publicity and tourist agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commons for a one-year term beginning October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the 2021-2022 I'm here to present the 2021-2022 budget and the marketing plan for Aransas Pass and give you an update on the COVID numbers versus the new numbers now. So we can start, Gary, with the first slide. So this is our annual visitor center tracking map. You can see we put in from 2017 all the way to 2021, with our 2020 being really low at 11,796. That was the COVID numbers. Remember, in March, we went down and never came back until the end of the year. If you look at 2021, we're already exceeding those numbers. And this is the reason why we're here tonight in August, because we wanted to really capture all the way up through July, because it was such a high-traffic month. And so we know we're going to exceed those numbers, and every indication on every chart that you see is going to show you that. On the next page, you're going to see our visitor center tracking, on the demands, on what comes in, on the phone, via the website, and the chamber front door. Everything that we have, these are the tracking issues that we, these are the traffic demands that we have, with shrimpery and beach access coming in number two this time, water sports, beach access, waterway, anything to do with the coastal water. Those are the high-traffic areas coming in right now and things to do. Of course, everybody's tired of sitting at home, they're ready to do something, and so they want something to do, which is a good idea to start looking at events from nonprofits. Some of the other communities around us always have, they make it a point to have an event every weekend. If we can get a lot of our organizations and nonprofits and community-minded people to start thinking about doing things on the weekend, that'll draw more people to our community. The website analytics is your next page. And this is our website from aransaspass.org. It's the Chamber and the visitor centers website. These are the total numbers to date for July of 2021. And 2017 was our best year, remember, right before the hurricane, we were about to skyrocket. So our numbers right now, if we can hit 132, are going to be over the top. And we're already at 72,000, which is about a 60,000 difference. So we're on track to make this year record-breaking. And on your next one, you're going to see the difference in the demand from last year and this year on the website. Obviously, there was nowhere to go, you had a mask on, you had to stay home, you weren't looking for anything. So your next page is going to be, this is what I, I put this on here because that spike right there is shrimpery. That's what happens when people come to our town for an event. So if we had more major events in our area, which we will have one this weekend with Hotties on the Harbor, that's the idea of trying to get people down here to come to our town and stimulate our economic impact. And then your next page is going to be on off of our website. These are the top states and the, this is the 2021 on the top, with Texas, Florida, California, Kansas, and Virginia, California's in there. And, and then on the bottom, you see the same ones, but then all of a sudden Illinois jumps in at number two, which was not even on there, and now all of a sudden Illinois is looking at us. And your next page is going to be from the travel guide request site, which is national. This is the site that we get our information from weekly. I showed this to y'all last year. These are the people that email us for demand, for relocation, for visiting Aransas Pass. And same kind of indications, Texas, California, again, Illinois is on here, Florida's on here too. These are the top seven. On our website, we have top 10 cities also. Austin is number one. We had lots of people at shrimpery too from Austin. We also had lots of complaints from people who drove that far and couldn't get into the event because it was so packed. So not a good problem to have, but definitely Austin is number one, Houston and Corpus Christi. And if you can see, Aransas Pass itself, the community has gone to the bottom and it's almost off the chart now. Other cities are looking at us. And then the next page is our website analytics, same thing. People are looking for certain things, shrimpery, events, number two again, off of the websites, where to stay, and then things to do once they're here. The reason that you don't see lodging so much on these, there's, it's because people already booked their rooms before they get here. So once they get here, they're always looking for what to do and restaurants to eat in. So sometimes we always want them to ask for lodging, but people are pretty smart and they know that they need to book those things before they get here, or they won't have a place to stay. And then this next page is our shows that we do. We do one in Houston and one in San Antonio. We were really lucky last year because the COVID shutdown happened after we did the two events in February, so we were able to get those two events in. And again, we were able to get in this year. Everything was over by the time we had them this year. So those are really good places to meet people, tell them where to go, where to stay. Calendar of events is very popular at those types of things, too. Our sales tax, I put this in here so that y'all could see the sales tax. If you look at the peak on the green, it's going to be March. That's the sales tax that came in in March of this year was 289,000. And this month, and the month of May, was 224. We don't have the June or July yet in here, but if you can see the peak, it's trending upwards already. And I think Sandra probably already told y'all at the last meeting that same thing. And then our Port Aransas Annual Ferry Traffic, this is the traffic that's going to and from Port Aransas. This is very important. Our Highway 361 is very busy. We need to try to get those people to stay here in our town as much as possible, also trending upwards. Same thing in July, we have 250,000. That was 10 days ago. So if you look at that 250,000 on the 2021 of July, and then look at 2019, we've already exceeded those numbers, and we still have 10 numbers to put in there. Though, we don't get those reports at the beginning of August, and we wanted to give you all this last week, so the numbers are not completely updated yet. And then our marketing billboards, we have two, and one in San Antonio, one in Houston, and then one on Highway 35. These are what you see on them. They've just been updated with some orange colors to make them brighter, so they're all brand-new. And then the next one is our annual billboard impressions. You'll see, these are by the millions of the cars that pass by. That's what the graph is showing you there. I don't really, my numbers are not on here, so I can't really tell you what the exact numbers are. It's just a graph. And these are our social media outlets that we use, the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce, the Visit Aransas Pass, the Hotties on the Harbor, the Shrimpery, and we have a new one, the Downtown Aransas Pass, the Destination one that we're doing. Magazines and Publications, we have a brand-new magazine that we did in-house this year. It's the Welcome to Aransas Pass, the Dream, Explore, and Discover Aransas Pass. That one's doing very well. That one also goes, like the rack cards out, to all the entry points of Texas and any visitor centers that request them. Here's our advertising resources that we use. We use Lamar Billboards and Outdoor for our Wharton, Houston, and San Antonio signs, Spectrum, Austin, Houston, and the Hill Country. We went into the Hill Country in Kerrville this year. And then all our promotional mailouts, the Progress, Text Maps, and iHeart Media, Enlighten. Enlighten does our commercials. We're about to do a new commercial next month. We're going to update the old commercial that we have. And then the next one is really exciting. This is the new campaign that we did with Spectrum. We bought into Spectrum last year, kind of at the end of the year, a huge campaign that we did with them. If you can see the television performance, we spent $14,000 in the last quarter of last year, getting ready for this year. And we also went into streaming, because we could get so much bang for our buck on the streaming now. And we targeted adults from 25 to 54 and travel enthusiasts. And one more, one more, Gary. And this is the market that we're in right now. We've got DirecTV, AT&amp;T, Grande, and Dish, and this is all the area that we're in, the zone that we're in, which is the San Antonio, Austin, Kerrville market. So now you can see why Austin's coming down here so much, because we really started moving up there. And we did Shark Week. We did Shark Week last year, and we're going to Shark Week this year. It's very popular. It does very well. And then the next page is going to, you're going to see the marketing dollars that we spent for that schedule on the TV, which was the 14,830. It gives you the commercials and impressions, the Shark Week 2021. The next page is your streaming, all of the channels that we stream on are commercials. And then, let's see, go again, one more, Gary. And then right here, it's going to total out. It'll tell you the TV was 14,831 for this year, and then the streaming was 17 for a total of 32,000 in TV alone. And because of that, we got also weather on the eights. So now our commercials on weather on the eights, it runs all the time on the weather on the eights. And then you have our budget. So gosh, it's hard to see. But this is the 2021 budget, the actual, and then the projections for this next year. It's hard to see. The marketing campaign itself is 103,453. Those are hard marketing dollars. Everything else would be something like the visitor center, the staff, if you have a staff person that's answering the phone or putting a marketing plan together. All those things are, you don't see them hard, but the marketing numbers are here on the 103,000. And the next page is your year, what you gave us the last three years, the 2019, 2020, and 2021. I wanted y'all to see that, so y'all would know where you were. And then any questions and comments they have, or suggestions? No?
There's somebody in the back that has a suggestion.
Yeah.
Can you, can you come up to the podium?
Rudy Saldivar, One Night at East Johnson, great job. How much of this is driven by the shrimpery funds? Like, how much do we make with the shrimpery, and how much do we spend on the shrimpery?
Well, the city doesn't spend or make the shrimpery money. That's the Chamber.
So when we see the police there working and?
We pay them.
So how much is all that?
Oh, you got it all day? The free budget's about $400,000.
So we spend $400,000 to bring in what?
To bring up.
So how much?
The whole economic impact of the city? I don't know.
Thank you.
I have to do a report for you for that.
Shrimpery's green, 40 minutes.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, excellent report. Good job. Thank you for everything you do for the city.
Thank you.
Okay, now you've got one more.
You'll have to.
The presentation regarding downtown cleanup of the community.
You have to make a motion.
There's a vote?
Oh, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve a publicity and tourism agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce for a one-year term beginning October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to.
Thank you. Okay, so this one is our Aransas Pass Downtown Cleanup Initiative. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history about this one. This was an established already 501(c)(3) organization that the Chamber took on. It wasn't very active. The group was, was a very passionate group, but they lost interest, they couldn't get anything done, and so they, they kind of gave it to us. So we took over last year right before the coronavirus, had a few meetings, and then kind of went to a halt. But now we're ready. We have a new group of people who are interested, passionate, and want to be a part of our, our downtown cleanup, so we're going to take that and run with it. I did meet with Gary this week earlier, so that he could know what I was talking about and kind of give him an update on what we were thinking. So I'm just going to go through this presentation again. The downtown is really something to look at, and it really hits hard when you see the picture, so I'm not really trying to pick on any one business down there. I just want you to get a visual of what it looks like in the downtown when you walk from one place to another, and really try to get everyone to understand the high sense of urgency in that area of the cleanup, because we do have 289,000 cars passing in the summer through there. So what do you do when you, when you have company? You clean up, right? You clean your house, you, at least the living room, right? Throw it under the couch. I don't know what you got to do, but you want to look good, right? Well, we have company all the time, and we need to look good. We need to hold ourselves to a certain standards, so this is what we're coming up with. And this is just a quick fix. There are a lot of other things that need to happen in the downtown, starting with ordinances and planning and zoning and enforcing those ordinances and codes. But for right now, let's, let's get some pretty stuff going on, okay? So just bear with me through this process. Okay, so Marcy and I walked the downtown. We only did the four-way, where the Commercial Street and 361 intersect, and those were those four different, those are four blocks right there. So we thought, okay, let's try to do something that we can really manage, I mean, something that's doable to begin with, and we'll grow from there out towards the rest of the areas. So we walked that area and we took some pictures. And again, I don't want to pick on anybody, because I know some of these belong to some, some really good people, but, and I'm sure they want to do something too, they just don't have vision. I've heard it several times, give me a vision and I'll get there. So this is why we're trying to do some of these things. So these are some of the things you see in the downtown. There's one on the corner where someone has patio furniture and their motorcycle and all kinds of stuff outside. And I know there's some ordinances in place to keep that from happening, but again, it needs to have some teeth behind it. We need to be able to enforce those things. And so that's another, that's another story. We'll, we'll get into that later. But, and this, this again, this is Rock and B at the top with the window, that City of Aransas Pass sticker, that's a, that's a building permit, I think, from 2018. How long does it take for someone to put something together? And how long does it, and when do we, when do we start doing manufacturing in our downtown? It's okay to build some cabinets, it's okay to build some furniture, but we should have a storefront. Our, our ordinance say that we have, we should have 30% storefront. So great, you go into a place there and you see some cabinets, or you see some furniture, or you see something you want to buy, behind the 30%, it's fine, but you should have some kind of storefront. So when people walk past your, past your building, they see some kind of commercial operations. In the current conditions, there's unmaintained flower beds, 16 in total, overgrown oaks and palm trees, and unkept vacant commercial spaces and misuse of commercial property. 100% used as residential space with no viable commercial storefront. Misuse of pedestrian right-of-ways, unreliable lighting, lack of cohesive vision and aesthetic appeal, and low inventory of businesses that attract consistent foot-traffic tourists and locals. So what's our immediate plan? And again, I'm not picking on anybody. I know it sounds kind of negative, but we have a plan to try to help. We're not just going to come up here and tell you that, you know, we see something wrong. When we come up here and tell you that something needs to be addressed, we're also here to help you fix it. So that's what I'm doing here tonight. So what's the plan? The cleanup and the removal. One, we're going to, we want the commercial removable, all unkept landscaping and flower beds, shrubs, small seating palms, and weeds. That's going to cost us $9,000. We've already done two bids on it. Pruning of all the oak trees, $1,000. And a letter encouraging the current business owners to power wash storefronts and remove all unapproved items and trash and debris in pedestrian walkways. This letter would also accrue a price estimate from a contractor to come in and power wash for them or move stuff if they couldn't do it. Sometimes people can't do that. They don't have the means, they don't have the truck, they don't, they're, you know, they're disabled. But we're going to put something in there that says, if you want this done, maybe another nonprofit, or maybe the Explorers, or someone else will come in and say, for $100, we'll come wash your windows, we'll come clean up for you, and give them those kind of options, too. And then what's the plan? This is the aesthetic appearance. So we, this one that you see with the cartoonish kind of looking one, that's for real, y'all. That's actually something that we've bid on. Those are pots that we, we're going to purchase, and we're going to have the, this group over here, the Clean Green Group, they're going to help us with this. So we'll get these pots, they will help us plant the plants and water them weekly. They'll get on a maintenance schedule. So all the things that we do are going to be maintained. We're not just going to go do something, leave it, and it's going to, it's not going to be maintained, because the beds that we have right now are not maintained. They, they don't have irrigation. So we're going to get some low-lying grass areas where, greenery, where it doesn't need a lot of water. And then we're also going to purchase water jugs and have the businesses either fill them up and put them outside their door, water them themselves, but also leave them outside so that the Clean Green Group can come and water those plants during, during their maintenance schedule. And then we also thought about working on a plan when we do the ordinances that they have to windowscape. So give people some visions. If you're having, if you have a place that you want to rent, dress it up a little bit, or just cover the windows up and put a sign in it that says you're renting it. So this is one of the examples, and give them a vision. This could be something that's on our website for the Downtown Aransas Pass, where we could list it this way for this, this business owner, and give people a vision of what it could look like if it was actually rented. And someone may get an idea from it and rent it even faster. The last one you see is the windowscape for a vacant space that's just behind the chamber in the, in the, in the Dolphin Alley. That is not the way that looks. It's just a vacant building. But we put some, some floral kind of drapes on and stuff to make it look like it was something that they could rent, and then put in that this space is available. And just things like that to cover up the windows, to make it look like there's either something there, or give someone some inspiration to do something in the downtown. So the maintenance plan is your next play. It's the weekly water rotation of the 12 pots, and now we're thinking 16, because we want to have two in the, in the middle on each side. And the Clean Green Aransas Pass volunteers, they have 129 of them, and they are here tonight representing their, their group. I mean, they're just as excited about it as we are. And then in addition to the business owners near larger plants, will be encouraged to support watering efforts by filling up the provided water jugs for volunteering. And then they, if they can't get the water that way, they can always come to the chamber and get it in the back of the chamber. And then the flower bed ground covering, the tree maintenance, and routine trimming and pruning by the city staff. and pruning by the city staff. I'm sorry, y'all. And then what's the plans project? The total cost of this is gonna be $16,630. The destination Aransas Pass has $1,500 of seed money. We do plan to have an event every year in October wrapped around Halloween in some way, and I won't tell you what that's gonna be, because it's a secret. We're gonna do a big reveal in two weeks. And then a February event, which would be like a themed Demardi Gras event. Those events would happen every year in addition to other things like food truck festivals and the farmer's market, which starts in two weeks, and start generating just a little bit of money to get us going. But the big thing right now is the push for the $16,000. We're hoping that the city can come and partner with us on that. We can do grants, and we will do grants, but grants take a long time. So if we start a grant, or we do 10 grants right now, we may have to wait four months, and we might get one or we might get none. So that would kind of stop our process. So we're asking the city to see if you would partner with us, fund this, and as we get grants, we could pay back the money that we use for this. Questions?
That's a great start. That's a great plan.
Let's see if we can make it happen.
Okay.
We need anything to happen down there.
Yeah.
Can you come up here to the podium, please? You have 30 seconds. No, I'm kidding.
Only 30 seconds. Our group is committed. We have probably nine or 10 on board already that we've discussed with maintaining the pots, cleaning, weeding, and watering. And so we're on board, use us freely, and we're committed to help you get up and running. Okay? 30 seconds, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an approving an emergency medical services contract with the Tri-County EMS beginning October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022.
Mayor, for the record, Councilmember Abrego has filed a conflict of disclosure affidavit and will not be participating or voting on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here this evening. What we're proposing is a one-year contract renewal. There's no change in the subsidy amounts or anything like that. We have had a 20% increase in our call volume from last year to date, and our response times are down. We've been utilizing our third ambulance very frequently during peak hours. It's been super busy. I've also been responding to calls myself and as a first responder, and we're working and training very closely with the fire department. We're grateful to have them on our team, and we're proud to serve the City of Aransas Pass. Any questions?
You do a great service.
Thank you.
I've never heard anything like it.
I haven't heard any complaints.
Well, I move to approve an emergency medical services contract with Tri-County EMS beginning on October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. We're gonna go to consider an act and resolution to award the request for qualifications for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARP Act, for professional engineering architectural surveying services to Kay Fries and Associates.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a part of the utility water sewer line extension project we've talked with you about, funded by the American Rescue Plan. And we went out for RFQs for engineering, and committee met and selected the Fries firm, and that's what is before you at this time. And what they will be doing is doing the design work for the extensions of water sewer in areas of the original city limits where those services are not now available. That's essentially what is happening.
Finally.
After so long.
I make a motion to award the request for qualifications for the American Rescue Plan for professional engineering architectural surveying services to Kay Fries and Associates.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider an act, resolution, awarding the request for proposals for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARP Act, for administration services to Grant Works Incorporated.
The more... Mayor and Council, the more we work with this particular funding system process, the more complex we're finding it to be. Consequently, we think it's advantageous for the city to have administrative assistance with this, with Grant Works. We went out for proposals and had a grand total of one that was submitted. That's Grant Works. So this service is needed, we believe, to deal especially with environmental issues that we anticipate encountering. These are federal dollars coming to the state, so that makes it even more complex. So administrative services are needed. It'll be paid for through this particular funding source. As sort of a side note, we started out with $1.8 million, and the amount has increased to just a little over $2 million. So again, those will be used for water sewer extensions within the original city limits, and this is for the administrative services to move forward with that.
And Grant Works has done a pretty good job for the city.
Grant Works has worked with us many years, and they have done a good job for us.
And I hope that we're gonna be getting updates along the way with this. Usually you don't get very many updates on things like this.
Be happy to, and thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we will add to the list of updates you're now getting.
Okay.
But that's a good point, and we will do that. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I make a motion to award the request for proposals for the American Rescue Plan for administrative services to Grant Works.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now, we're gonna go to consider an act and rescheduling the September 6, 2021 city
council meeting to Tuesday, September 7, 2021, due to a city holiday, which is Labor Day.
That should be self-explanatory, Mr. Mayor and Council. I don't know if there'll be a big debate up there or not on that.
I make a motion to reschedule the September 6, 2021 city council meeting to Tuesday, September 7, 2021, due to a city holiday.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to development services, case number 2106-07, which is considering an act on an ordinance granting a rezoning request located at the southeast corner of Johnson Avenue and Highway 361. From R10 Single Family Dwelling District to PD Planned Development District being a land 7.861 acres portion of the farmland number three and all of lot number two, land block number 48, Burton and Danford subdivision, save and accept an 8,000-square-foot track out of the northeast corner of said farm lot three in Aransas Pass, Texas, table July 6, 2021.
Mr....
We're gonna let Mr. Summers speak first.
Thank you. Do you want him to speak first?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and staff. My name's Trey Summers. I'm the developer behind the project there. We did receive an alternate proposal showing the desire to move the entrance to the subdivision off of 361. So in light of that, we'd like to table this item until the newly rescheduled September 7 meeting, so that we have time to evaluate that option and meet with Tech dot to see what the rules and restrictions would be moving the entrance there to Commercial or Texas 361.
Well, I'll make a motion that we table the item so that he has time to get Tech dot to evaluate and access up at 361 to the September 7 meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I second.
Vicki second.
Vicki.
Oh, okay.
It was Vicki.
I didn't hear that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to city council or staff announcements for a workshop meeting August 10, 2021.
That's it. The... That's all we have to really say at this particular point. There are a couple of things we're working on. A training session, per your request, related to the gentleman, Mr. Steven Sosidom, who was here earlier. I'm sorry?
The tax resale.
A tax resale, yes. So... And he will be here for that. I'm anticipating Steven Sosidom. So that's the only thing scheduled for this moment, but as you know, those changes, the agenda items. So anyway, that's what we have scheduled as of this moment.
Okay. 5:30.
Now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information. Reside existing policy. Advice of this subject may be placed on the agenda for subsequent meeting. Any comments?
I'd like to make one comment, please.
Sure.
So again, good evening, Mayor and City Council, and the 900 voters on the YouTube link and the 9,000 citizens of the town, which I did not know was being recorded last time. So many of us voted for all of you, right? And we are trying to be good citizens in this drama with the rezoning. It's now been tabled four times. We went to work with Trey. We went to work with the Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce especially, because we feel that same ugliness of downtown. We see the blight. We've had the Facebook replies, right? Build, 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 because it's better than having nothing. We want something, right? At the July 6 meeting where it was tabled, the suggestion was made by Councilwoman Scruggs to like, let's have a workshop on this. City manager said, "We have a lot of things going on, and we'll try to fit it in." Mayor, you said that make sure to include us. We don't think a workshop happened. We would like a workshop to happen now between now and September, since we have some time. We already talked to Trey. If we need to help him with Tech dot, we will, right? And so that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Could we put it on the next week?
On the August 10 meeting?
On the August 10. Yes, certainly.
Okay. Did you hear... So it'll be on the August 10?
Next Monday.
And the workshop starts us...
5:30.
5:30.
Everyone heard that, right? Well, I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
The development of the Calypso subdivision on the corner of East Johnson and Commercial. Or the rezoning, I should say. The rezoning of that piece of property.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to let y'all know, most of y'all probably already know, we lost one of our board members, a very dear friend, Vance Dawson. He was an amazing person and a huge contributor to Aransas Pass and the entire region, and I ask that you keep his family in your prayers tonight and your thoughts for the rest of the weekend. Hopefully, we'll find out some information on his... On the way they're gonna honor him, and we'll share that information with you as soon as we do.
Thank you.
There was one comment that's posted online. That was a gentleman by the name of Alex called to report that Moore Avenue, almost to the T of Old 35, is impassable due to a large washout after the rains. Said he called the city, doesn't recall who he spoke with, but was told that it was a Tech dot issue. He wants us to make sure... He wants the city to make sure that Tech dot is contacted.
So is it just a matter of filling in a hole, or is a lot more than that?
The whole block is...
Oh, okay. Have you heard from Tech dot yet?
I haven't. My computer called them again last week, Thursday, Friday.
I think everybody should call them every hour on the hour. Put that number up there so everybody can start calling. Thank you, Mary.
Anybody else? Sure.
On the last diagram we got that was revised, over on the right side, they have a boat washout. I wonder if all of this has been checked with the environmental? Because you start washing out there, because there's a lake next to the house that I believe her name is, Ms. Garson, and used to be Dr. Hill, a dentist, back in the 50s. And that fills up, I mean, overflows. And it... And when the state came out and put our new highway in, they put in what they called seep pipe. And they're four feet square. And I said, "What is the reason you call it seep pipe?" And he said, "We leave a void, and we don't put them all together, so the water comes in the pipes and seeps down." Well, you know, you can look at our last rain. There's no way. And trash comes in the outlets and fills up those voids. And I wonder what... If he has put a plan in for the water as far as pipes and so forth? And that has to be drawn out and explained, because if not, then we taxpayers, it's already gonna be paying a price, because during Shrimpery, they went from the opening all the way down past my house into Ingleside at the... Oh, the... What is it? Where the bank used to be. And anyway, you know, we worked hard. I say "we" because I helped Rick Wanisak on a lot of it. And to get... To get the pool and the baseball park and the adult park, and what is it gonna do? Because it still opens onto Johnson. So the... There needs to be an environmental study done on this, because if based on washing out those boats and there's not proper drainage, it's gonna come fill that lake up again and hurt that poor old lady. So... And I made some...
Okay. Your three minutes are up.
Your three minutes are up, Ms....
Yes.
Your three minutes are up.
Well, let me tell you, your sound system sucks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, now we're gonna go into executive session, section 551-071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act, to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter on which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to the State of Texas EXREL Association Against Annexation Abuse versus City of Aransas Pass, cause number 8-19-0368-CV-C, in the 343rd District Court of Aransas County, Com Brown Harbor Bulkhead FEMA Report Project, Repair Project, Com Brown Harbor Lease, GNS Marine Incorporated, Com Brown Harbor Lease, Captain Caddy, and it is 649.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene in open session to consider and take action if any on any item discussed on the second of session.
I make a motion that we approve a ConBrow Harbor lease agreement with GNS Marine Incorporated for total linear footage of one hundred and nineteen point nine oh beginning September one, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty thirty-one for property at track one being located at the Easterly Terminus of Lot Avenue and partially within the Huff Street right-of-way and track two, a metal building located at one ten Huff Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Your turn.
I make a motion to approve a ConBrow Harbor lease with Captain Caddes for total linear footage of one hundred fourteen point three one beginning September first, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-first, two thousand thirty-one for property at track one lots fifty-eight through sixty-one and two feet of lot sixty-two, block one, section six and track two, a building located on lots fifty-eight through sixty-one, block one, section six, which has a total linear footage of one hundred fourteen point thirty-one and track two and the use of building being two thousand square feet.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
All in favor?